Okay, all ready? All right. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. If you hadn't got your phone turned down, might want to. Anyway, this new year, starting out this new year, January 4th, I hope everybody had a happy new year. I call this meeting in order at this time. Mr. Slade, glad to see you back and I hope you're in full form.
I'm counting on it.
Okay, do you mind doing the indication?
I'll be going ahead too. Let's pray. Father, we begin this meeting in the most appropriate way, acknowledging that everything that we have, everything that we are, everything that we hope to be in this new year, Father, is a gift for you. Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have poured out on us so deserving. Father, for help, for safety, for guidance, for your hand of protection on our community, the way that you have provided so many wonderful people, Lord, to help our community be everything that it can be. All of that, Lord, is such a blessing, and we just want to stop now to say thank you for that, that we would not take it for granted. Father, I pray that as we look forward into the new year with the hope that is there, I pray, Father, that we would remember that apart from you, that hope, Lord, is not well placed. So we place our hope and our trust and our faith in you and in the way that you love your children. And so evident, Lord, in the way that you protect us and give us your word and give us your guidance, Lord, and set boundaries for us, all of that, Lord, are just wonderful reminders that we have a heavenly Father that we can count on. So that's where we're placing our faith and trust as we move forward in Christ's name.
Amen. I don't believe there's any public comments or recognition. We'll move on to old business. How motion approved?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, was this right here, five?
I'd be glad to. Can I? So there's a statute, a statutory code section that allows at the beginning of the new year that we would adopt general policies to be followed in the administration of the county and the duties of the county administrator in accordance with that section. We don't know if this is required or not, but it's best practice for us to get this on our books and have it on the minutes that we have adopted that code section as the way that we're going to conduct county business.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt this?
Motion to approve that.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Senate agenda?
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Boy, you came in right at the right time. Ms. Caroline Gilbert.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
On my item A, there's one correction on there. It's requesting to refund any tax sale purchasers for, it says PIN 42249, but it should actually just be the 42155. The property should not have gone through the land sale process. It was just a posting error.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
On item B, another request to void tax sale and refund any tax sale purchasers for PIN number 35139, again, a clerk posting error.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Jay, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
John Sullivan.
Does any state his name and Florida lead?
Yeah. Yeah, you might want to state your name and your address.
I'll be glad to leave and never come back. I promise you. I made petition to change the assessment, 2020 real property assessment.
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
And item B, void the 2020 tax sale, PIN number 5504, and mail in a new tax receipt.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you up and moving.
You say that like he wasn't before.
Lord.
Morning. I make motion approved work accomplished and scheduled.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
I'll give you a quick rundown of what we did last month. Five livestock barrels, 70 culvert replacement, 42 ditch working tickets, eight limb cutting work orders, nine driveway apron repairs, 364 limb pickups, four school bus turnarounds, six projects for the school, 158 road repairs, and five road strip with our new striping truck.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
What's it costing, if you have had time, what's it costing us to do a striping per mile?
I haven't quite got it all the way down yet, Steve, because we're trying to get a paint and some different bulk in the glass beads. We just got some stuff together that, when we got the striping truck, we're looking for some bulk quantity stuff now. This has done kind of got cold to where we can't really do it. So I don't have a real number on it, but it's running about 18 cents is what we got right now, yes, sir.
Versus what we pay before, you know?
We run around 50 cents, yeah, what we was paying.
Quite a few foots in a mile, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
What?
There's quite a few dollars in that truck, too.
Yeah. But it does real good on re-striping, you know, where we can see the lines. It's not really set up just yet for...
Laying down a new one.
Laying down a new stripe, but we're looking at putting a GPS model in there that'll give us that capability.
If I'm doing the math on that, that's pretty dang cheap.
Yes, sir.
Thousand dollars, or less than $1,000 a mile. Wow.
Is that one line or the whole boat outside?
That's just one line.
That's one line, so if you got two, it's two and it's twice that. So it's four.
Yeah, you got your two edges and a double.
Well, I thought, I'm surprised it didn't come set up to do new striping. I thought that was one of the things we were trying to do. What, do we just not know spec it out for that?
Well, they just don't have the, we can add the GPS model on it. We got it mostly for re-striping there. We said new roads that we're going to be blacktopping. We wanted to put the thermoplastic down on that.
I like, I like the stripe, at least side striping, maybe one middle, or even chip seal.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you see the sides are important.
You know, it can be some dark nights and rain.
But the glass beads is what we're having a little, right now, we're going to get them in 50-pound sacks. We're trying to find those in bulk.
Is that what goes in the middle, that you stick to the?
Once it, if it puts out the paint, it puts out a little glass bead in there, and that's what gives you the reflection at night.
I got you.
On it, so. But it's doing a good job. I mean, we just, we're just trying to learn how to...
Yeah.
How to do it. I gotta get the right layout man on it.
Well, you got some other stuff on here, don't you?
Yes, sir. I've got request approval for Atmos Energy Utility Permit to replace a 1-inch steel main with a 2-inch HDPE natural gas line along Lexington Drive to be installed along Turtle Creek Drive, District 2.
Motion.
Second.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Request approval for Center Point Energy Utility Permit to construct a natural gas line along Cross Trickle Bridge to be installed between Quail Field Run and Red Fox Road.
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Jay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Well, I got...
Yes, sir.
I just got the call like five minutes ago. I know we're not finished at all with the bridges on Andrew Chapel, the two bridges that have been put in, but some of the people have called me and said it looks like that on the first bridge that goes over the creek, I think, that the ends are breaking off, not the bridge end, you know, the endings are failing.
They took some significant sinking right there. Me and Tim talked about it. We've actually engaged Joe McGee to come back and redo those ends and do a geotech, see what went wrong right there. Something on the backfilling. Oh, Steve, there's nothing wrong with the block. Yes, sir. We were aware of it. Got everybody engaged going forward on that.
Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Slade?
First item under my section is a public... Check out in the hall to see if there's anybody here. The first public hearing is going to be on Hale Fireworks and Jonathan Pond, a request for a conditional use permit. This is to allow for a tent set up for fireworks. And so that won't be for this season, obviously. That's already passed us, but for any upcoming season, you would be authorizing. And so we will open that public hearing. That public hearing is open, Mr. President. Hale Fireworks and Jonathan Pond are seeking a conditional use permit to operate fireworks stand at 106 Builder Square Drive. They are proposing to operate out of a 40-by-60 tent during fireworks seasons that are regulated by state laws. It's 1.48 acre parcel, Zone C3. The sale of fireworks is listed as one of the conditional uses in a C3 zone. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Hale Fireworks, Jonathan Pond, conditional use permit request.
It's already been said.
Mr. President, I don't see anybody here to speak on that matter. At this time, we will close that public hearing, and it'll be appropriate to take action on that.
I have not had one complaint. I make a motion we approve it.
The only complaint I got, Steve, was that we didn't take action on it on the 15th. So they kind of missed this season.
Yeah, I bet you got a big one complaining about. All right, motion's approved by Mr. Steve. Second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Mr. President, item B is a discussion of and potential action on a request by the Langford Water Association for relocation expenses that are related to the Andrew Chapel Road project. Looking back at Mr. Parker, and he may have to help me here. Langford Water Association has infrastructure that's in, within the boundary of the new road as constructed, and so they've been requested to move that. They've done a takeoff on their cost to relocate. I'll let Tim help me with that figure.
Right, they had originally estimated their relocation at 48,917. Their actual construction cost came in at 34,316. The county in concept had agreed to pay half of that.
Pay half.
Which would be 17,158.
Okay, so what we would need is...
It's done. That work is completed.
Right. So what you guys did previously was to agree to pay half up to and not exceeding, I think it was a $25,000 number. Their actual costs are less than what their estimate was. And so now, all you've got to do, all you need to do is to agree to pay half of what they actually spent
Which is about 1,700.
And authorize the issuance of the check.
17,000, wait a minute, is 17,000?
17,158. Y'all have, y'all already approved paying half up to not exceeding 25?
I was kidding.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
17,158, you'll be authorizing issuance of the check.
Motion approved, Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Hey, on the, earlier, we approved it on the, I made, it wasn't consent, on the gas line on, on that previous... No, it was Center Point.
Yeah.
Center Point, is that going to cost 25?
No, so this, that one's actually at Trickle Bridge, Brad.
Okay.
So it doesn't have anything to do, I don't think it has anything to do with Andrew Chapel, but...
But that's a permit for them to do.
Yeah, all they're doing is boring under the road at Trickle Bridge. Okay? All right? So did we, did we finish item B?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, item C.
Yeah.
Mr. President, item C is a continuation of our effort with respect to the excess fee income that will be remitted early by the Chancery Clerk. This is approval of the interlocal agreement between the Board Supervisors, the Clerk, and the school district for use of that excess fee income. This is for the Rankin County School District. I actually have the original of the document here with me today as executed by the school. And so we would just be authorizing the president now to execute it, and we can get it on to the AG's office for authorization.
Will it, after it gets to the AG's office, will it come back here and we can actually take the checks out for the schools?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's exactly right, Steve. So that, this one is for the Rankin County School District.
I make a question.
Wait a minute. Go ahead. All right, I do a discussion. Motion by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion? What I was, okay, so we're just going to hand each school a check?
No, sir. We're going to hand the school district a large check. I think it's for 230,000.
Right.
And they're obligated, under the agreement then, to parcel that out to each of the schools identified in the...
The way I thought you were saying, you were going to give to the school.
I just want to be able to go to each school and be face to face and, you know, tell them that in a time like last year, these schools, even the bigger ones, but especially the smaller ones, a lot of them didn't have any, well, it was very limited as who could come to the games and things like that. So they collected even less support, financial support, from people. And this isn't going to get them up to par, but it'll help a lot on the smaller schools. And I just want to go shake their hand and tell them we're happy that...
Yeah, okay.
That our Chancery Clerk had this money available and we were able to work it out.
Right, I guess.
The agreement itself also contemplates that there would be some publicity about this. And so it's each party, both the Board, the Clerk, and the school district, have authorized each other to make that a public disclosure, as it were. So it's really up to the Board and the Clerk to kind of work with the, both the Rankin County School District and the Pearl School District, as you'll see on the next item, to figure out what is the way that we want to make this presentation. So it contemplates that that will happen.
So Larry already redeemed the check.
He just gave it to Brad.
So how much is it?
250,000.
250,000. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I'd like for y'all to consider, when we do media stuff, this was a COVID year, and these schools suffered, I mean, everybody suffered, but they depend a lot on sponsorships from people that were not able, could not help sponsor some of their programs that they couldn't go with. And this will help fill that gap. It may not ever happen again. I don't want to, for us to even give the impression that this is an ongoing thing.
Correct. And that's clear from the way that the interlocal agreement has been structured. It's a one-year deal.
For the public, I'm talking about.
Yes. Good, good point, Steve. All right? So we would need a motion, it's already been done, I think y'all are discussing, yeah.
Yeah, we had a motion, second. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay?
Item D is the same thing, except it's with the Pearl Separate School District. This is approval of the interlocal agreement between the Board Supervisors, the Clerk, and Pearl Separate School District for use of the excess fee income. My understanding is that the Pearl School District Board has already authorized and approved. I haven't seen the original. I asked the superintendent to make sure we got the original here. Janice, have you seen the original by chance? Okay, we'll make sure.
At the funeral, he said he was sending it.
Okay, we'll make sure that we get the original. All you're doing is authorizing the board president to execute the original when we get it, and we'll get it likewise to the AG's office for authorization.
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Mr. President, item E is the receipt of requests for tax exemption presented to Mississippi Code 27311F from Mississippi Methodist Hospital and Rehabilitation Center. And this is for those parcels that are identified here in this minute entry and for receipt of a request for tax exemption under that same code section for personal property tax exemption, 14341 is the PPIN. And we have, sir...
Is there something new?
It is. These are small parcels of property that are titled in Mississippi Methodist Rehab and are under some form of agreement for use leasing, but it's to ancillary services that are provided by Mississippi Methodist Rehab. It's within the, it's under the umbrella of the rehab. What we did was, we took these exemption requests and we studied to make sure that what they were asking for a tax exemption on was actually being used as a part of their core charitable purpose as an organization. So we're satisfied, now that we've had a chance to review everything, that each of these parcels is being used for Methodist Rehab's charitable purpose under that code section, and they qualify for the exemption.
How long is the exemption for?
Well, they can, they can have this exemption in perpetuity because of their charitable purpose under that code section.
Why is it just now, now? I don't, I've never seen it before, I don't guess either.
Well, I'm not sure when they actually acquired that property. Do you have any idea, John?
What property is charitable? They never sent you a bill. None of these will either. Yeah, tongue in cheek.
Yeah, I just don't recall every single one on here. I didn't know it's because of the law that the legislature passed or adding some...
No, the next three on there, Jay, are related to that new law.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop.
Unless we don't have a choice. If we have a choice, we're going to have a choice.
This is not a choice matter.
I guess the next one, none of the others are either.
That's correct.
Well, we should just combine them then.
Actually, if we may, I'd like to take item E separately since it's under a separate code section here.
No, I'm fine, I just made the comment, that's fine. Yeah.
Motion approved.
All right, motion approved, by Jay.
Second.
Second by Steve. Second by Steve.
I wish we didn't have...
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
If the Board is open mind to take F, G, and H together, we can do that. Let me explain what that is. Y'all recall, a couple of years back, we went to the legislature. We asked for some help because there was some confusion over the airport authority tax exemption. So this has nothing to do with charity, has nothing to do with anything else that's related under Title 27, which is where most of the tax exemptions are. This is a tax exemption that's embedded in the airport authority law. And so if the operation is connected to the airport and serves a function that is airport-related, they are entitled to an exemption for as long as they have an arrangement with the airport authority. Each of these entities, you'll see them listed there, United Airlines, Inc., United Ground Express, Inc., Frontier Airlines, each of those entities has a lease agreement with JMAA, and they serve the function of providing services to airport passengers and users of airport facilities.
I make a motion to approve F, G, and H.
Motion approved, those three by Jay. Second by...
All right, second, I was looking down at Brad.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Yeah, so, and these are personal property tax exemptions. They don't actually own the property, right? So they don't get a real property exemption. What, I've done a quick takeoff. These are small amounts. These personal property tax exemptions are small amounts. For instance, the United Airlines, it's $430 is what, is the impact to Rankin County. Now, there's a larger, you've got municipalities, and you've got school districts and other things that are also involved in there. But the county portion is only $430 on that one exemption. Okay? Item I is an approval of a second revised grant agreement and all related revised contractual obligations and/or agreements associated with the Zero to Three Grant involving interactions and understandings between Rankin County and UMMC. And so this is your third opportunity to try to get this right. Every time we think we've got it nailed down, the youth court gets advised by either UMMC or the grant administrator that some word is out of place. So this is cleaning up what you've already authorized previously, and we've been told in writing that this, in fact, is the last time you're going to have to do this.
Second.
Who approved it? Motion approved by Jay, second by Brad. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Item J is a, is cleanup work associated with your package retail situation. We were notified by Department of Revenue through the ABC Division that the Board had to acknowledge that there, in fact, will be package retail operations in the resort status areas of Rankin County. Tried to explain to the contact, it didn't make any sense when the state legislature is the one who established that requirement, right? And the Board had nothing to do with that. There is a separate code section under Title 67 that says, even if the legislature is the one mandating, the county has to acknowledge that it's happening. You don't have any authority to change that. You can't do anything about it, but you still have to acknowledge it before ABC will actually give a permit to somebody that y'all have already authorized to operate. So we, this is cleanup work on your minutes that we can then give to ABC that says, we understand the legislature is mandating us to provide for package retail. If it qualifies, y'all have already made that call. We've got one now that you've already authorized. So this is simply an acknowledgement on your minutes that we understand this is happening.
Motion approved by Jay.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Gentlemen, if I may, can I please add one thing to the agenda that is not anybody's fault but mine for it not being on here? We received back, while I was out, from the Cleary Fire Protection District, we received back the petition signed by, I think, 50 different signatories asking that the Cleary Fire Protection District be expanded to include...
We voted on that.
Yeah, yeah, that, y'all authorized, y'all have authorized the receipt of the petition. We have it back. I need y'all to acknowledge that we have the petition back now. And I need you to tell me to send this to your circuit clerk for verification of the signatures. That's what I need to add to the agenda first and then afterwards.
Motion to add by Mr. Bishop. Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion approved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
All right, the next step in the process will be, after we receive certification, it'll come back to us with a certification of the circuit clerk, and we will schedule a public hearing for there to be public comment and any objections to be made before you actually authorize the expansion. So that'll be the next step. There's a few more steps left in the process. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, Keith Hicks, county administrator.
Item A is the authority to pay JH&amp;H Architect, Planners, Interiors for their services related to the Circuit Court renovation in the amount of $5,725.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second by...
Second.
Gaines. Any discussion? Do we need to know, I mean, when, is there anything else we need to know about that?
Have they started work over there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're waiting on the carpet to come in. It's been ordered, waiting on the carpet to come in to be laid, and then they'll be able to set all the furniture back in place, and they'll be ready to go.
Have they got the jury box fixed?
They have the jury box fixed in the large courtroom. The smaller courtroom, there's some issues with spacing, so we're still addressing that issue, which may go back to the old plexiglass at some point.
You can see, it's only so big.
It is.
Is there not an option for it then?
We're going to look at both options of plexiglass and no plexiglass, but it looks like with the spacing, the most we're going to be able to get is about six inches a piece between each chair in the jury box.
That's how to do what we do then, it's all we got, how much work we...
Is that like front to back?
Oh, side to side. Right now, the chairs are buddied up against each other.
Yeah.
And, and even expanding the jury box out, there, there's one of these columns in, in the jury box, so you can't use the other side of it as far as it comes out. You can only use in front of it, so it's, uh, limited on how far out you can spread the seats.
So, that's the case. Will you, uh, inquire with, uh, J, H, and H what we paid for?
Well-
I mean, if they designed it, it should be able to work, I would think.
Well, and their design does include plexiglass.
Okay, alright.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So it already included plexiglass?
It did.
This will get us through the current situation. And then, assuming for the sake of discussion, that the vaccine turns out to be effective.
Yeah.
Then your, your spacing will be effective without the plexiglass. So we'll have plexiglass there temporarily. Then hopefully, when everything goes back to some sense of normalcy, it can be removed, and there will be adequate spacing to address the situation that folks don't wanna be shoulder to shoulder anymore.
That courtroom will not be used until April, so we have a window, uh-
Good grief, yeah.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, I had a motion, a second, any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Um, item B is the acknowledgement, uh, for receipt of bids. Um, we, for the county depository for the two-year term ending December twenty, twenty-two. We've received bids from, uh, Bank Plus and Trustmark, and would like to take those under advisement.
Okay. Have a motion. Motion by Mr. Gaines, take his under advisement, second by-
Me.
By me? Second by, second by Brad. Any discussion? All favors, aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
And gentlemen, I, I do have one item to add. Um, and this would be acceptance of the Supreme Court order on December twenty-second of twenty twenty, appointing Family Master David Mara, Jr. for services beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and compensate the Family Master a salary of twenty-five hundred dollars per month as ordered by the Rank- Rankin County Chancery Court. And this is a renewal of-
Motion to add this out.
Motion to add this by, add this item to the agenda by Mr. Bishop, second by, uh, Brad. Any discussion? All favors, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay. Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Approved by Brad, second by-
Second.
Jay. Any discussion? All favors, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I got, I got one thing, I just want, on this one business, real simple. Uh, the, the fire station found, uh, clear to, we've, uh, to the point, we have to put the septic system in. Um, I think, uh, we, uh, had, the health department has come down, looked at everything. Health department's approved and talked to the, uh, the gentleman, there's a gentleman that does that. Uh, anyway, he gave a price of about three different ways, but, and then we could go either way. Health department's good with either way, but the one he'd prefer to use is actually the lesser one. He thinks would be the most efficient. It's like, up to like twenty-six hundred dollars. But I just wanted to throw that out, let y'all be aware on that, make sure it's okay to move forward on that. It's, uh, um, so anyway, I think all the legwork's been done for that. So I thought that was a, a good price, too. And, and in that, uh, I think probably be best then have him go write it up as a pro, and I thought it'd be best to do that, too, and then present to the Board and have it for record. So we have to do that before we get to water or power.
Yep.
So, anyway, I just make sure y'all, um-
Don't stop now.
On board there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I was expecting to be a whole lot more, to be truthful. I, I really was, this actually is a, huh?
You did five, six hours, I see.
This is actually a treatment plan. Yeah. So, anyway, just to let you be aware of that. Okay?
I, I'd like to give y'all a quick update on, on the AT&T situation.
I've got-
You got, yeah.
I got one little something.
Yeah, we got a little something. We, we do, I have a motion, uh, for the need to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
I'm, go ahead, Brad.
Make a motion, go into executive session.
By Brad. For Brad, and, uh, was it personnel litigation?